So on my side of things, and I take a lot of the legislative stuff just because that's something that I enjoy and it's kind of how I came on to the city manager's office with the tax leads. So I've spent a lot of time with John and Doug. And honestly, the biggest value that you get from a lobbyist is their connection to people and their knowledge of how people respond to things. Just like one of my department heads may come to me and bring an issue and want to know how the commission responds. My job is to understand each of you and how you might take on an issue. Their job is to do the same with the representatives and the senators. And they do that and they do that very well. The other thing that I really enjoy about them is that any time of day or night, I can be laying in bed at 11 o'clock at night and see that something happened on a particular issue. And I can text either one of them and within a few minutes I get a response. So that's very nice. It's very handy to be able to have that information quickly, know what's going on, and then the next day be able to do something with it. So I appreciate those things about them. Obviously, my time working with them has been a little bit shorter than Matt's, so he may have something to add.
Well, the 11 o'clock at night text explains the increase. Yeah, they're first class. We've appreciated, we've had other council. We retained them just as the city of Garden City for issues that sort of fell outside of Southwest Kansas Coalition. We made the switch to Pinniger and Smith at the Southwest Kansas Coalition level after working with someone else initially. And so, you know, we've had a situation where we've had some representation or council that we didn't feel like we were getting our money's worth. And that isn't, that isn't the case with these folks. I would, yeah, I would strongly encourage the commission to approve it and other municipal entities around the state when they've done background on these guys. I've expressed to them that we've been very satisfied. And if it were up to me in their community, I would tell them to hire these folks. They also, they do the Southwest Kansas Coalition, they do us, and they do the, I think it's called LGR. It's the Association of Western Kansas Counties. KLPG, thank you. The, and so they're really in tune with Western Kansas issues that affect local government, not just at the city level, but the county level.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we approve the contract with Pinniger and Smith Associates for $26,075 per year.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the police citizens advisory board. Chief?
Thank you, Matt. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The advisory board has a vacant position with a term expiring December of 2021. We have two great applicants that applied and submitted applications, both Melissa Sable and Emlyn Swartz, to be considered for the available board position. Ms. Sable and Ms. Swartz were both interviewed by myself along with chairperson Chuck Allen and vice chairperson Melina Johnson of the advisory board. The applications were subsequently presented and reviewed by the police citizens advisory board on the regularly scheduled meeting held on September 17th. The board recommends appointing Emlyn Swartz to fill the vacant positions. I can tell you that both applicants were great applicants, but we have one position to fill. The alternatives were to either appoint Emlyn Swartz, or appoint Melissa Sable, or do not appoint anyone to the vacant positions. And recommend the advisory board to continue to solicit applications. The advisory board recommends the governing body choose alternative one, appoint Ms. Swartz to serve on the advisory board.
The commission may remember, but in case you don't, Melissa Sable was appointed to an advisory board position at the last commission meeting to a different advisory board.
I'll make the motion to appoint Emlyn Swartz to the police citizens advisory board.
Second.
There's been a second by Commissioner Andrew. Any other discussion on that item?
I just wanted, and I know this is not possible for, because of our commission time meetings and, you know, a lot of people work during the day. But I really would appreciate when people are appointed, I mean, if they can come, and I'd love to, because this might be the only time we get to meet them. And also, I see these advisory committees as a vital part of our community. I mean, they do a huge, they give huge input into what we decide as a commission. And one thing I was thinking about, and this is maybe new business, but I'd love to see if we could do an appreciation lunch or something for these so that we can actually meet the people who are doing this incredible work. And maybe it's a dinner so they don't have to. And I also want to make sure we invite them to the October chamber breakfast. But I thought it was excellent.
Time's up, no.
Thank you, Mayor. But I just wanted to say, I would love, for anyone who brings an advisory committee, you know, someone who they're recommending, I would love to get the chance to meet them. Their application, I think they were really well done, but it would be really great to meet them. So, and it's not just for you, but for anyone who brings.
Great idea.
Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Thanks, chief.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and authorize, or consider the authorization for the use of special assessments for the 11th Street and, for a development at 11th Street and Emerson Street.
All right, you have in your pack at the complete staff report regarding this request. This is regards to the Oroco addition phase two. And Harold Oroco is requesting authorization for the use of special assessments to provide infrastructure improvements to the 11th Street and Emerson Street project as included in exhibit one. The infrastructure improvements will include curb, gutter, water, sewer, and electric services. There are 12 lots in the Oroco addition phase two. The parcels participating in the program are block two, lots one through eight, block three, lots one through four, and that's in exhibit two. The developer is requesting to provide 100% of the total cost. A special assessment districts is established for 10 years. And/or the special assessment can be paid up front and not divided over the 10 years if the developer chooses to pay those upfront. The total amount expected for this project is estimated at 202,500 with contingencies. This amount does not include financing fees. Alternatives are authorize staff to begin the petition process or not to approve the specials process to begin. Staff recommends authorization to begin the petition process. The fiscal note, if the petition process is authorized, the special assessment district will provide 100% of the funding. The city will permanently finance the final costs in a 2019 general obligation bond and will be reimbursed over a 10-year period through special assessments on the properties.
Okay, what's the zoning of this?
This is zoned R, I believe R2 is the zoning district.
So it could be duplexes.
No, single family.
So according to the drawing, it's a single family?
Yeah, single family. He did rezone the properties, the lots that are but Thompson, West Thompson Street to R3.
Okay, that's the R, yes.
The cul-de-sac that you see itself is all single family. The lots facing West Thompson Street are. family. The lots facing West Thompson Street are duplexes.
So Caleb, I want to make sure I understand this. So when you talk about the special assessment district will provide 100% of the funding, can you help me understand that better?
Um, yes. Basically, in this instance, the cost, this 200 and somewhat thousand dollars that is going to cost to put the infrastructure in, will be assessed all of the lots, and all of the lots will pay that full $202,000 reimbursement back. It's not asking for any share to be shared by the city at large.
That's the way, that's the way we used to do it all the time.
That's right.
You just pay specials and...
Yeah, that's what I thought, too, but it just...
The only downside of that is when you go get appraisal, they deduct that.
Oh, wow.
And it makes quite a difference in the appraisal process. If you've got 10 years of specials, and the way we've been doing it, you know, is like an RHID and different things, but...
And that's why I was wondering why this, I did call your office this morning. I was wondering why this wasn't RHID. Is it because they didn't request it? Or is it because it's not necessary, or?
Yeah, they're requesting, honestly, this, doing specials is the, the full cost is then, is then paid for by the city upfront cost. RHID, the developer has to come up with all the upfront costs. Specials, those costs are at risk of the governing body putting that in into the general obligation bond and being reimbursed back over time for that. So there, therein lies the, whether that is something that the community wants to do or not do when you consider specials.
By statute, is there a limit on how much we can do as far as this financing?
Well, that falls down to what your capacity is to have debt and bond the projects.
But it's not particular to a development project. It's just whatever we're willing to take on by statute for the entire geo?
Correct.
And so would this go through our geo bond? Is that how that's going to work?
Yes.
The 2019 geo bond?
Yes.
Of course, we've got some coming off, too, so...
Okay.
And that, that would be, as you consider specials, you know, if you get several specials in a row, that's something you want to consider is what's our capacity? Do we want to set apart for that in our, in our funding?
So does this meet the, so I know chat has some levels of different costs, or I don't know if it's square footage or cost on homes. Does this meet one of the chat, one of the goals of the chat document, or the...
Yes, this, as far as the housing, right now, pretty much every category is, is in need of housing. We have a, we kind of have the goal in the chat report that we've set as kind of our, we're going to the puck on that, in a sense. And so we're, we, we know that not all of these will be built at once. They'll be built and staggered over time. Same, similar with a lot of RHIDs. So we're trying to watch those as we come in to see, okay, how many are we expecting to build? If he builds three, three a year for the next three or four years and builds out, then we're taking that into consideration with the chat numbers or that housing market study. Because we're in the process of updating that chat report right now. We should have that back by December, or end of December, first part of January. And that'll really tell us where we are with our housing needs because, and what programs we should or shouldn't continue to use, so.
Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize the use of special assessments for the Roscoe addition, phase two.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? Thank you.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Federal Aviation Administration Supplemental Appropriation Optional Project Request for Consideration of Funds for the Construction of a New Terminal at Garden City Regional Airport.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Exclaimer, I do not come up with those titles. This is actually, so what you're looking at is a request to let the FAA know that, hey, we're interested in some of this additional billion dollars that has became available for airport improvement projects. The request that the city is considering to submit is for $22 million. And looking at that funding amount, if you apply 90%, which is our federal share to that, that brings us just 20 cents shy of 20 million, which is the cap for the funding requests that you can have. So for your consideration, the total cost of the construction of the terminal that we reviewed during the pre-meeting workshop on August 2nd, 7th, for the city commission, to look at the terminal area plan project and the recommendations to build a new terminal, this is the total estimated cost for construction is 26 million. So if we apply for this funding, the city would ultimately be responsible for roughly around $6.8 million is the 10% share. Now, these numbers can change. This is just the request. The FAA does have the discretion to award $10 million, $20 million, or all the project, which is probably not going to happen, but this is just kind of placeholder numbers. If we are awarded this project, then we will come back to you in roughly May of 2019 with a formal FAA grant application, and then that way, all those numbers will be concrete, and so you'll know what the city's obligation. In between this time, the FAA estimates that they're going to receive a lot of requests for this supplemental funding. So we're looking about at least a six-month period until we hear something back. So at this point, the city is not obligated to fund any of this project. It's just a request to let the FAA know, but also having the, in the back of your mind, that the city might be required to supplement $6 million for this project. It could go up to 8 million. We just don't know at this point. So that's what we're looking at.
I'll make the motion to approve the, the request for the FAA supplemental appropriation optional project request for consideration of funds for the construction of a new terminal at Garden City Regional Airport. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fink has her second. Any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, I think, the only item we have is the 2:00 PM public hearing. We're still a few minutes away. If you'd like to take up the consent agenda and don't have any items which you'd like to remove from that for further discussion, the appropriate motion would be G1 through 16.
Can we ask a question, Matt, without having to remove it out of the consent agenda?
Yeah, depends on how complex the answer is.
Well, I know that it's the, where you talked about the 2018 Metropolitan Energy Center. Is this from the VW grant settlement dollars that they were able to take advantage of?
Why don't we pull that off, and we'll answer that question for you. So if we want to do the consent agenda, it'd be items G1 through 3 and 5 through 16.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items G1 through 3 and 5 through 16.
There's been a motion to approve items G1 through 3 and 5 through 16 on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Dale made the second. Any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay?
So item G4 was the governing body's consideration, or is, the governing body's consideration approval of the professional service agreement with Metropolitan Energy Center for the CNG refuse collection vehicle purchase grant. Sam?
Good afternoon. The answer to the question on the VW settlement, this isn't part of that.
Okay.
This is a separate grant that we received with a few other communities. VW settlement will go to the school districts first, and after that period is gone, then we'll have an option to apply for that as well. And we'll be looking at applying for some of those funds as well.
How many trucks do you have now that are running on natural gas? Are they just to use that, or?
We have three refuse trucks running right now out of 12.
And this will add a three additional?
This adds four.
One of those has already been purchased, though, right? So this is the second of the four. So we have three in the fleet. One has been purchased with this grant that commits us to purchase four. So there's a little bit, we're at a point in time where there's a little bit of crossover in those numbers.
Yeah, I was trying to figure it out when I was reading through it, so, okay.
So we're getting $22,000 per truck, which is, how much are the trucks total?
Trucks are running about 200 and 2,000. There's about a $44,000 difference between the engine for a CNG truck versus a diesel. So it offsets some of those costs for the additional cost for the engine. We also are receiving some incentives from Sparks. They're going to lower their fuel costs for us. And also, I believe, Black Hills also adds. So we're going to get a few more incentives for this first truck.
So I think the overall strategy when the commission committed to this capital obligation and accepting the grants was when our trucks and on the schedule our trucks would come due and our equipment replacement schedule, the next four would be compressed natural gas, and the grant plus the other partners contributing their incentives would erase the engine differential between what it would be. Now, I don't think it's probably completely closed that gap, but it's coming now.
It's closing close.
It's 2:00, so we'll hold off on, on making the vote on that particular item. I will go back to item number...
10A.
Seven, 10A?
Item 10A.
Okay, 10A.
The public, the 2:00 PM public hearing to consider adoption of the development plan and establishment of the rural housing incentive district for Chapel Heights Third Edition is brought before the city commission. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2806-2018.
All right. This is the, the final step for the Chapel Heights Third Edition RHID, and, and this will complete their project as, and get them started after the waiting period. So, any questions? If not, we'll open it.
How many houses?
Say what?
How many lots? I was just looking it up here.
How many lots in there, Caleb?
37 houses.
There was, there was 112 housing units. It doesn't say lots.
That's 37 single families.
Yeah, they're all single-family homes. 37 single-family homes.
Okay.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
I'll open the, I'll open the public hearing now. Hello?
All right.
Yes, I've been kind of a long process, Joe, trying to get this going. Have you have any questions at all? Are you familiar with the plat?
Yes.
Yes.
These are all R1?
Yes.
No, no apartments?
No, R3.
How full are you on the phase one? What do you have?
In phase one, we had R3 and, and some of it, I think, one block or something like that.
Yeah, but how many lots do you have left?
Eight.
Eight?
Yep. And then we did the RBC also, which 22 lots, and we have, I think we have six of those left. And they're all spoken for, except for the three that are set up for duplexes. Those are not spoken for. Everything else is spoken for.
So the next phase, it looks like?
Yeah, phase two, it's a, you know, it's a little hillier area. It's going to be specialized housing and so on like that. That's going to be slower going, because it's going to be more of a custom type thing. But that's why we're going back into phase three and get into that price range that, that we need and is more suitable at this time.
So will there be another entrance into that subdivision off of Mary Street, or is it just going to be the Glenwood Drive is still going to be the only drive off of that into the phase three?
Well, eventually, we'll have four entrances. We'll have one off of Barker, three off of Mary. But it's all said and done. That's what, there's actually two more when we do phase three. There'll be two more entrances going.
Off of Mary Street.
Yep. And we're, we're going to have to work with Sam on the, on the Jenny Barker part to get a bridge in and so on like that. And then, of course, they're thinking about changing Walmart drainage to go straight across and into DD2. So that's, things we're going to be working with, with Sam on that, too.
Is there, is there any plan to enlarge that DD2? Because I mean, we're...
We, when we developed, we set it, we raised, we added 15 foot to the ditch through our property.
Width?
Instead of 75 foot, it was now 90, or 90 foot available to DD2.
Okay.
Going through our property.
Because we're putting a lot more water through there. What, I'm thinking about on down, down line, the old country club property.
That's...
Somebody else's problem.
Well, yeah, that's where the problem's at.
Yeah, it's narrowed down there.
It, well, it narrows down, and then it's not, there's not as, quite as much slope.
Right.
It, actually, I think about Shawman going south is kind of, start slowing down. And that's where we have the problem. T-Bone Estates is where they really seem to have a problem at this time.
Yeah, we're hoping to take care of that.
And I don't know where all the water comes from, but there's not much going through our ditch, but boys, you're running over in T-Bone.
I don't think it's the big pool that far away, but I don't think it's the big pool that far away.
How big? It's, I don't know how small. I'm assuming you're talking about the Folds area?
No, the big pool, they talked about losing 200,000 gallons a day, and I just, that was shocking.
Any other questions? You have any other comments for us for this project, or?
You know, there's kind of some rumors going around that there's something coming into town. Is there anything that you can talk about at this time?
This is a public hearing on, on RHID for, for this project, so.
So you can't say?
Can't say anything during this public hearing, so.
Okay. How about after?
Probably can't say anything afterwards.
Probably not then either, unless Lana wants to.
Which we have.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment at this time? I'll close the public hearing, then.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance 2806-2018 and RHID phase three addition to Chapel Heights.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Dale made the second. Any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Happy building.
Happy building.
Now we're back to item...
G4. And I don't think we've received a motion or a second.
No, we were...
And I think we concluded our answer to the question.
I would, I would move that we approve the professional services with CNG grant with the Metropolitan Energy Center and authorize the mayor to sign the...
There's been motion, and Commissioner Dale made the second. Any other discussion on that item? None being? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? That passed.
Very good.
Looks like we're on to Commissioner comments.
Correct.
Commissioner Finkhauser.
Thought the pre-meeting was good. We kind of needed update on the court system every once in a while, and I thought they did a good job presenting that. The other thing is, just like to comment on fall cleanup. I think that's one of the best services that we provide. And it seems like every year, people start putting stuff out a little earlier, but I know it costs, costs us some money, but at least people get rid of stuff instead of piling it in the alley. So I really, I think that, and I hear a lot of positive comments about that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Dale?
I thought we had a great meeting today, and I want to thank the commissioners for the positive and motivated conversation. We had reference to the pool. It's going to be a major decision that will come upon us in the near future. And I appreciate the work that the assistant city manager is going to do to bring that forth to us, to give us some ideas. Because it's something that's, it's, it's there, and we can't ignore it for too much longer. We're going to have to do something. We'll just have to keep our eyes and ears open to the public and be open to many suggestions, and hopefully that the body here can make a good decision that'll take them on for another 100 years, maybe. Thank you. 100 years, maybe.
Commissioner Enright?
So I'm excited about, there's an annual meeting this weekend of the League of Municipalities, which is the most complicated thing. Looking forward to not only the opportunity to learn more about the important work we do, but also to connect with other commissioners across the state. There's some really exciting, we do have, on Monday, there is, we're honoring one of our own at a luncheon, and so I think that's going to be exciting, too. And it's like, Sonnenberg?
Cliff, Sonnenberg, yep.
Forty years, yeah. So I think that's, that's going to be really neat, so I'm, I'm excited to be able to be there for that. I also, I'm looking forward to the State of the City address. I think being at the Chamber of Breakfast is a really great example of, and letting people know what's going on with the city, and I'm looking forward to Mayor Sessner's report. I'm also excited that Leadership Garden City will be there in full force, and so I'm supporting that, and also just to see the city in action, to hear what's going on. So Leadership Garden City started up this month, earlier this month, and we have 14 participants, and it's going really well. We, we're, actually, we're hosted by the city this last week, so it's been really exciting. I appreciate all that's going on in the fall, and all of the really neat opportunities we have as a city to come together. So I just want to thank the City of Garden City for all the great opportunities I've been able to take, or taken several of them, so, thank you.
Commissioner Burns?
To me?
It's to you.
To me? I'm excited, I get to attend the league meeting this weekend, too, and I'm, I'm excited about it. It's my first league meeting, and I thank the city for sponsoring me to get to go to that. And I, I want to express the appreciation myself, and I think across the commission, to the municipal court. I really appreciated the way they described the interactions with the folks who come before the court, and the willingness to meet people where they are and, and make productive, meaningful plans for people to, to help. And so I, I, that really spoke to me, and I thought it was really important, and I was very glad to hear that, and proud of the work that they do. That's all.
Just wanted to let you know that I attended the city's Finney County United Way kickoff event this last week. I want to thank the staff that organized the event. It was a great success, as always. The United Way, the United Way's goal is to advance and create a long-lasting change that prevents problems from beginning in the first place, and that's really what the United Way funds those organizations in our community to help, to enhance and advance the causes in our community. So, again, and they're, they're in their fundraising campaign right now, so, but again, congratulations to those who organized that event. It was a great event. I, along with Commissioner Finkhauser and Commissioner Burns, were on the tree board tour. It turned out to be a great tour. Visited a number of areas, focused on the cemetery this time, had a lot of good information about the cemetery and plans that they're looking at, enhancements that they're doing at the cemetery, so always a fun tour to go on. I agree that, had a lot of good discussion about the pool and kind of the direction we need to, to go. It is, you know, it is one of those items that we need to look at and figure out a way to help sustain that amenity in our, in our community in some fashion or form. I agree, I, there are a lot of events, being mayor, that I will have to attend and do welcomes at for the month of October, the Joint Legislative Transportation Task Force on the 11th, the Diversity Breakfast on the 11th Summit as well, the annual state address that I'm starting to work on. There was one other item, we did have a movie maker come in, filmmaker, and they did a film, a documentary, on how Garden City, how we welcome diversity in our community and the cultures into our community. And they're having their premiere event on October 10th at 6:00 at Garden City High School in the auditorium. It's about a 33-minute film, but really focuses on how, how we accept and welcome and how we integrate the different cultures into our community. So, pretty interesting film. So if you have time or don't have anything to do on October 10th, that evening at 6:00, they'll be premiering it at the auditorium in Garden City High School.
Are you on it?
No, I'm not in it.
Oh.
Just saying, it highlights our community, something, again, one of those items where people come into our community and kind of poke, prod, and listen to what we do, but it really highlights who we are and what we are as a community. So just another thing that gets out there and showcasing and highlighting Garden City. On that note, I have nothing else, so, meeting adjourned.
this week, but I, I don't know, they haven't told us that for sure, but...